So, good afternoon or evening. Today is Tuesday, November, excuse me, November 1st. We'd like to welcome everyone to our regular board meeting. I'd like for, we're at item 1, A1, which is our roll call and our call to order. So would you call the roll, please?
Member Higgins. Member Jacobs.
Present.
Member Donley.
Here.
President Bellamy.
Here.
Member Wilson.
Present.
Member Lessons.
Here.
And Member Holloman.
Here.
And Student Representative Shaw.
Here.
We also have our Superintendent Dr. Bryant, as well as our Executive Assistant Amanda Foster. So for the flag salute, we're going to have Ms. Shaw do the flag salute and the land acknowledgement.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the Anchorage School Board, I want to take a moment to recognize and offer gratitude for the sacred ancestral lands of the Denina people. We acknowledge and appreciate that our offices, facilities, and schools are on these sacred indigenous lands, and we honor the traditional care that has been given to this land throughout generations. We are grateful for the opportunity to grow, learn, work, and create educational communities on the sacred land. We extend continued respect for the many cultures, creativity, and resilience of its indigenous peoples. Chanukah.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. So that brings us to the approval of our agenda.
Madam President, I move to approve the agenda as presented. Second.
Moved in second to approve the agenda as presented. Any, not seeing any opposition? Okay, that the agenda stands approved as presented. And that now we move on to our item B, which is our reports, beginning with our military report. Welcome Colonel.
Good evening. I'm Lieutenant Colonel Chris Schepke. I'm briefing on behalf of Colonel Eric Dunn, who is Mission Support Group Commander at Jay Bear. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you this evening. Got two items I wanted to cover. Back in October, Anchored for Life Club, which is a peer-to-peer group in Ursa Minor Elementary School, they held a, an event, a community event called Socktober, where they raised, collected socks for the homeless community in Anchorage. We're proud to say they collected over 1,000 pairs of socks for the homeless folks downtown. And we're really proud of the group for giving back to the community in that respect. A little bit about Anchored for Life Club. It is a peer-to-peer group that is designed to connect youth and build change and resiliency skills in our young folks. They conduct service projects around the installation and the community to do opportunities to enhance social skills, learn leadership skills, build character, improve self-esteem, and give back to the community. So really proud of what they accomplished there in the month of October and what they're going to be doing for the community and the installation in the future. The second item I wanted to brief is the Jay Bear School Partnership Program. Recently, the agreement with the ASD expired, and we're taking that opportunity to kind of streamline the overall agreement with the school district and the installation. And while, while the program has paused formally, the volunteerism from the installation has not. There are service members that are in the community going to the schools and taking part in it, but not in official capacity. So while we're, it is continuing, there is participation continuing with it, but it's not in a formal sanctioned way. But what we have done is we are streamlining that agreement. We're almost finished with it. And then we'll be formalizing the installation policy of how the different organizations across the base, whether it's Army or Air Force, are going to be partnered with and paired up with each of the schools out there. So we have a really formalized and clear expectations from the military side, as well as the schools, on how the program will be executed. So are there any questions?
Any questions? Seeing none? We thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. And Ms. Shaw, are you ready?
Yeah. So SAB had their most recent meeting on Tuesday, October 11th, and that one was from 11:15 a.m. to 1:15 p.m. The E-Board is meeting on the 8th to plan the next meeting, which is November 15th from 8:15 to 10:15 a.m. And then this week, I am attending the Alaska Association of School Boards Conference, the youth section for ASD. So, yeah.
All right. I look forward to seeing you at the conference. Are there any questions for our student rep? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Shaw. All right, continuing on, that brings us to item C. But I did skip the opening statement, and that is to welcome all of you tonight to our board meeting and to, of course, thank you for your ongoing and continuous support through your time, your talents, and your tax dollars. So we appreciate you. Now we're on item C, Go Monitoring. And we're going to start with our math report, our math conversation. So I'm going to just affirm that all the components are there. So the math, we are now going to have our monitoring conversation on the report that was given at our last meeting. And so tonight, our primary conversation is on math proficiency. That goal reads, beginning September 2020, the percentage of students in grades 3 through 9 proficient in math on the State Sumative Assessment, the Alaska STAR, which stands for the Alaska System of Academic Readiness, which was previously PEAKS, will increase from 40% to 55% by May 2026. We will also be looking specifically at interim goal number 2.1. And that goal reads, the percentage of grade 3 through 9 students at or above the math benchmark. And that benchmark is defined at the 40th percentile. On interim adaptive assessments, that's MAP growth, will increase from 52% in Spring '22 to 60% in Spring 2023. Board members have been given the opportunity to send in questions ahead of time or to bring them with them tonight or to use our little progress monitoring, little cheat sheet that's in front of us. So I want to first of all confirm that all four components of the report are present. The report clearly shows what is being monitored and that its focus is a specific goal and interim goal. The report shows data for the three previous reporting periods, the current reporting period, the target, and the target reporting periods. The report shows the superintendent's evaluation of performance. And the report, finally, the report shows supporting documentation that evidences the superintendent's evaluation via the tables provided, and it also indicates next step. So with all the four components present, we're ready to begin our progress monitoring conversation. For the purpose of understanding the current reality, we're going to start with our, as we always do, who, what, why? And then we will, of course, end with the how category questions. So we want you to feel free to ask all your questions. So with that logic in mind, I'd like to now open the floor for the board to engage in inquiry regarding our math proficiency goal. Dr. Bryant, your opening comment?
Thank you. We are excited to engage in our first conversation together on our math goals. I'm joined alongside our academic services leadership team, and we're also joined by our incoming Chief Academic Officer, who will be facilitating how, who answers which question. So we're excited to engage in the work. So with that said, we'll open it up to questions we have about our math proficiency goals.
Right. So who's, who wants to go first? I know Kelly wants to go first. Can we, can we not have Kelly go first tonight? You know I joke. Yes, 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 yes. So I, yes, you may go first.
All right. So Slide 5, pardon my squeaky voice. Slide 5 suggests that our English language learners and our students who are in special education are showing our lowest rates of proficiency and that these subgroups really presented the only decreases in the percent of students at or above our benchmark. And so what are we doing about that? Are we adjusting the what or the how? How?
I'll refer to my colleagues to explain all of the ins and outs of that really great question.
Okay.
So I'm the incoming Chief Academic Officer, and I'm...
We need to welcome you officially.
Thank you, Ms. Bellamy.
Thank you.
So our, our team here, led by Dr. Beltran, with Dr. Mason, Amanda Barr, and Eric Visti will answer most of these questions. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Beltran and her team right now.
It's on, it's on. All right, thank you. Through the superintendent to the, to Member Lessons. Basically, the iReady Classroom Mathematics has embedded very explicit supports for English language learners as well as supports for students at various tiers of support need. So those are all embedded within the program. We are in, as you know, in our second year of implementation of the content, and we are currently continuing to iterate our professional support of not only principals around the structures and processes within the program, but teachers as well.
You like to follow up?
Can, can I just ask what that looks like in, I don't know, a 4th grade classroom or a 7th grade classroom? How, how would a student receive those additional supports? And I don't know, when, as they're calculating the area of a rectangle or pre-algebra? I don't know.
Understood. So I will answer from a systems perspective. I will leave it to Mr. Visti to answer more specifically about how principals structure support within their schedules and the support of their teachers in their buildings, because that's his world house. And Ms. Barr, please join in as our kind of resident expert with helping teachers figure these things out. So as we move through, there are routines that are explicitly taught within the curriculum. Those routines involve the front-loading of language that is necessary for students to access the curriculum, in addition to the systems that, cues that they need to engage with each other and to engage with, with teachers around those conceptual mathematical understandings. When you ask what it looks like, it will look different in every classroom dependent upon the needs of students and depending on the, the, the part of the routine that they are in. And I'll let Ms. Barr kind of explain those different pieces. But it does not, it's not cookie cutter. And this is an opportunity where our teachers really do shine because they are able to know their students and utilize the pieces of the program that is, that's needed to help students to fill those needs. Did you need, want to add to that, Mr. Visti?
Yeah, can you hear me? No, yeah, no. Little bit, little closer. A little bit closer now. All right. At the leadership level within the buildings, what we're doing is focusing our MTSS meetings. So we meet quarterly with our instructional coaches and partnership with teaching and learning. And we've changed how we run our MTS meetings and our ICE Intervention Coach, or sorry, Instructional Coach and Principal Meetings so that it's a 50% reading emphasis and a 50% math emphasis to make sure that we're beefing up both our math and our reading simultaneously. At the building level, we have 45-minute wind blocks, which is part of our MTSS structure so that we can create more of a systematic way of approaching both instruction and reading and in math. Currently, we are partnering in terms of looking at the science of math and what are effective and strong intervention tools that we can use to employ at the elementary level. That's an ongoing work that we're currently working to refine as we are implementing our, our math curriculum.
Were you going to, okay, no. All right. So were you done, Member Lessons, with your follow-up? So on that same slide, our students of color is demonstrating, it just shows that they're not doing as well. And I guess I just want to know, what are we attributing the disparity to? And I have a how question, but I'll bring it back at the end.
Thank you for the question, Madam President. I, when we look at our student data, especially as it's presented, those are two different cohorts of students. It's not quite apples to apples because when you look at the numbers of students tested in the fall of 2021, and then you look at the same number of students tested in the fall of 2022, we have increased. But that, that means that those are not necessarily, that the comparison doesn't quite work the same way. Yes, they are not meeting the mark, and there are lots of different reasons potentially as to why. Some that are specific to systems potentially in buildings, some specific to the fact that we are in year two of a major implementation. And it is not quite yet, if you recall, the work that we did, have done over the years around implementation science and what that looks like and what the, what, how long that takes for, for teachers and students to have the foundations to respond. However, given that, we are seeing some, some bright spots with the students' response to instruction as not only reported by teachers and student, different data, but also our, our students, our teachers and principals as well. Ms. Barr, would you like to add anything to that? Dr. Beltran?
I won't be able to take it off like Eric did. I also wanted to add that the math team through Dr. Mason has provided robust training in the past two years. So at the beginning of the year, she engaged in two days of math training for all the instructional coaches. She engaged in training with new teachers. And the August cross-district training, it was K through 8 math. It was very robust, and she has another one planned coming up in November to support our teachers as they learn and teach this new curriculum.
And my follow-up just has to do with the, on that same page, I think it's on the bottom, where they, we have 41 schools that are below. We have 45 schools that are on target or above. And we have, so I, I, what's your best guesstimate as to why? What, what's happening in those 45 schools is not happening in the 41? I don't know how to ask it any other way. What do you think?
Could be myriad factors, Madam President, and it really does truly require further analysis with, in partnership with assessment and evaluation.
Because I, I, I would like to understand, because if there are things that's happening in those 45 schools, maybe we need to expand that to the other schools. So I would, I would like more information on that. I mean, it's no rush, but I would like to have some more information on that. Other questions from our, you guys go just leave it up to Member Lessons and I tonight? Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam President. What's the relationship between math growth and proficiency?
So the growth that you are noticing here, this is specifically from our MAP data, measures of academic progress. And the proficiency data that we are talking about is based on, of course, PEAKS or now STAR, and, but formerly PEAKS. So proficiency is how students are performing across standards, and growth is how they are growing from one point, one benchmark to the next in their understanding.
So if we just pick a category, how is the scores on the chart that we're shown relate to proficiency?
Yeah, so this is specific to that benchmark measure, the 40th percentile, that norm-referenced criteria. So students that have reached the 40th percentile or higher are being marked as proficient according to this data.
Okay. So, Madam President, I, you know, I believe that the math curriculum selection product, process that the board used in selecting our current curriculum was faulty. And that led to the board, I think, not choosing wisely as to the current math curriculum. We have about four schools that utilize the traditional Saxon math.
Member Donley, I'm going to interrupt only because right now we're having our monitoring conversation on the data that's before us. This is not the time to go back and, and second-guess the curriculum. We, so I'm, I'm going to ask that we focus on the questions about the data that's before us today.
I think it's highly relevant, the data before us today, because I think if all our schools were using Saxon math, we'd have much better data.
The board at the time did not...
The result relates, it directly relates, Madam President, to the presentation...
But we have made a decision on a curriculum.
...in a successful manner to get our students up to speed on math. And my question directly relates to that. And my question is, if our Saxon schools were broke out on that chart, where would they appear? What would be their rating on this chart?
Do we, how many schools use Saxon other than charters?
So I, we would have to get that information for you simply because that information was shared with the board last year, and those results and the rankings were put in the Board Connect last year, actually in 2020, when the report was given to the board. And, and we would have to go back and pull that up. But I, I feel Dr. Beltran would be able to provide that later, at a later time.
Well, I remember that graph that indicated where the top achievings of our schools were. And they, by far, they tended to be our few Saxon schools. And I think that's directly relevant to our conversation as far as outcome in trying to gain proficiency of our students with mathematics. If we find that there is an existing curriculum that's vastly superior to the one that we currently are utilizing that are giving the, us these results, I think that's a very relevant part of the conversation.
I think the board made a decision on the curriculum. If we are going to change it as a board, that's another discussion. That's all I'm saying, Member Donley. Tonight, we're looking at the data that's before us. And if at some point in the future, we want to revisit the curriculum, that is another subject to me. Any other questions? Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So I didn't send this in advance, so if the team needs more time to research, by all means.
Can you guys hear?
No.
I'm sorry, I'll get closer to the microphone that works now for us, sorry. We got out of habit during the work session. So this isn't a question that I mailed in. So if we need more time, that's totally understood. I'm looking through the proficiency data by grade level on page 4, and the 8th and 9th grade students, the percentage of at or above benchmark has gone down. I don't, we, we're spending it, when we talk budget, we're talking about, a lot about the middle school model and things of that nature. I guess I'm wondering if we can extrapolate anything aside from just factors associated with each student cohort based on the fact that those grades went down beyond just the particulars of that group of students.
So I will say again that there's, we will, in the second year of an implementation, there's still quite a bit of learning happening about how to use reports, how to use student data, how to intervene. We can't speak to the school-based decisions that are made every day between principals and teachers, but from a systems perspective, given where we are in the implementation, we, we, we think that that will definitely improve. I'll let Ms. Barr have the floor for a minute. She spends a great deal of time in middle schools as well.
Yeah, I would just reiterate the comment earlier about being intentional about those comparisons and looking at if you're comparing last year's 8th graders to this year's 8th graders, that's a different cohort of students. I think the conversational error was kind of tracking the cohorts. And if you look that way, then you can actually see the increase as far as that student track. And I can also tell you that our data, our ASD data very strongly correlates to the national trends that we're seeing in terms of the past two to three years of testing results.
Member Wilson?
Can you tell me a little bit more about the instructional coaches, particularly the math instructional coaches? If you have the number of coaches and how much time approximately that they're, they have allocated to each school? Kind of how that, how that works?
So math shares instructional coaches at the elementary level. So we don't have specific math instructional coaches. We have instructional coaches in the district and elementary schools that support both English language arts and mathematics instruction in the building. So it's the same group of people that Director Orr works with for ELA, okay? We started a year and a half ago, working very intentionally with them. So sharing time throughout the course of the year. We've created trajectories of learning where they are engaged not only with each other around mathematical concepts, standards for mathematical practices, and, and, and the curriculum, and how to coach math, which is nuanced and some a little bit different than ELA. But then we've also added instructional coach and principal partnership meetings because as the instructional leaders in buildings and elementary school, that partnership is very critical and very important. We spend every other Friday with them now. We, at one point, did have them every Friday, but, you know, we had to shift our model to support schools and ensure that instructional coaches were in schools. So, Mr. Visti, did you want to add anything to that?
I'll just add, you know, one of the challenges in terms of the implementation and starting off last year, if we go back to a year, year ago, you know, we had instructional coaches covering classrooms. We had people, the ed center, that were covering classrooms. We were all in classrooms in schools, trying to keep schools open and afloat and help students out, and our staff did an amazing job. You know, I think we're at year, the beginning of year two of this implementation cycle. I look forward to where we're going to go with it. We're not there yet. But our instructional coaches, our teachers, our principals are all key players in terms of making this lift right now.
And I just wanted to add that we've been intentionally supporting this year, getting the coaches. They've been really pivotal to helping with implementation in terms of modeling in teacher classrooms and providing feedback to our team about what are the additional supports that are needed for classroom teachers in terms of implementing the program, so.
So the, we may not have the answer to this question the more I think about it, but I'm going to ask it anyway. So the NAEP, the National NAEP scores came out, and 4th grade and 8th grade are not doing very well. How does, how does that, how does a NAEP assessment kind of compares with Alaska STAR?
That's a great question for our colleagues in assessment and evaluation. Honestly, it really is. Because that is their, that is their work, that is their forte, and I would not want to answer that without their, their input. That's what they do.
So, but when people see that, though, it's kind of like, oh, you know, it's just an automatic, you know, we're failing kids. When, I think it's apples to oranges. I don't think it's apples to apples. But it's, it's a measurement that apparently is well... think it's apples to apples, but it's a measurement that apparently is well-respected and that we have to live with. And it's kind of bearing out in our data. But, so I was just wondering what your thoughts were on, you know, on that. Because this data that we have, and I'm glad, Member Donnelly, asked that question about the difference between growth and proficiency. But I think most of us are really on the proficiency side. I mean, the growth is between, you know, really for me, it's the teacher, it's the parents, it's how do we, how we're communicating about how good their kids are getting, what they need. The proficiency is like the sauce. That's the, that's that magic sauce. So I just, it is the elephant in the room for me, you know? I mean, I've heard, I get lots of emails about how horrible our kids are doing. Doesn't matter that we went through a major earthquake, doesn't matter that we shut schools down for a year and a half. We want, we want our scores to be better. And I'm just, I don't even know that there's a question there. It's just an acknowledgement.
We can follow up with that, though.
But I would like to know how the NAEP compares with our new state assessment. Member.
Thank you. Yeah, I am also, I continue to be interested in the relation, the distinction between growth and proficiency. When the Edonomics team introduced the concept that you could look at per school, per student expenditures at different schools and compare that with proficiency, it's pretty clear that proficiency is a function of SES. But when you look at growth, and ASD did provide, I'm looking at a slide from June of 2022, you guys did a nice slide in our last math goal monitoring. You can see that, guess what, Willowcrest Elementary School, one of our title schools, had the second highest growth. That's really exciting. That's not a story that gets told. And so all of a sudden, the schools that are clustered as proficient because they're coming from high SES families and regions of the city, it's scattered when you look at growth. And I think growth is really what I would like to see more of. We know we need to get to proficiency, but where is that growth happening? So if we could maybe more regularly plot our growth on, in these monitoring reports, I think that would be an asset for the board and maybe an asset for public discourse as well. Just my two cents.
And we will provide growth data measures in the fall. The MAP is just a proficiency measure. We do growth then in the winter and the spring.
Okay. Other questions?
Yes, Member Wilson.
And I hope I'm not missing it on here, but I would like to see the differences between the sixth grade scores and proficiency rate in math that are in elementary schools versus the sixth graders that are in middle school.
We can make that available to you, Member Wilson, at a different time.
That'd be awesome. Thank you.
Great. Okay, other questions? Yes, Member Donnelly.
Thank you, Madam President. So I think a big thing about student success is parents helping them with their homework. I mean, I know it was with my kids. And I hear from a lot of parents that it's very difficult to help their children now with their homework because the way they're being taught is so different than what the parents learned, how they learned. And I was wondering, what kind of outreach do we have, or what kind of programs do we have to mitigate that separation of the parents from their kids helping them do their homework?
I will let Ms. Barr answer that. One of the features that was very well-received with iReady Classroom Mathematics was the built-in parental support and both online and in materials that go home at the beginning of each lesson, I mean, yeah, each unit, excuse me. So, Ms. Barr.
Yep. So each lesson of iReady Classroom Mathematics actually starts with a family letter that actually has suggestions for ways to support your child in the upcoming three to five to six days of instruction. And a lot of, I've seen several classrooms that use that as part of the engagement with families. I've seen schools that actually post that letter in their common area for parents, and most teachers do send those homes for families. Those are also available, as Dr. Mason mentioned, online, as well as other family support resources, including videos for every unit. There are also video examples of the developed sessions, which are about two-thirds of the sessions, the daily instruction that's available for students. So all of that's available online.
We also maintain an internal ASD family webpage that has been, it was established during the review of the materials, and it still maintains so that parents and families can get information on how to support their students with the concepts and the program.
So my question, I'm gonna go back, I think Member Lessons asked the question, I think it was slide five, about the ELL and our special needs kids. And I think, Dr. Mason, you said that there were components of the curriculum that, could you just dive into that a little bit more? Because our special needs kids are not doing well, neither are our ELL. And, but what I hear you saying is that there is a capacity for that to, that's all been taken into consideration.
Yes.
And it's just a matter of what.
So I will begin my response from a systems perspective, and I'll have Ms. Barr dig into the actual content because she has that expert knowledge. So in the, not only this election, but in the implementation, we engage in a cross-departmental process by which special education, our related services folks, elementary and secondary ed collaborate on how we not only build plans to help support instruction from a teacher perspective, but in vetting the materials and ensuring that they are well. So we meet every two weeks as a leadership team for math, and we discuss these types of issues. When it comes to what it looks like in a classroom or in a building, again, it is very nuanced depending upon the, you know, the principal, the IC, the teacher, the students in that particular classroom. But the components of what teachers need to plan and execute for students in service to students is there. And so, Ms. Barr, if you can talk about what that looks like in the curriculum.
Yep. Cut me off when I go too. So the daily sessions, which is how they're referred to in the program, include supports specific for English language learners, and as well as, so those are identified as the can-do descriptors that are aligned with the ELL programs as far as what students should be able to do linguistically and as far as acquiring language skills. There are also mathematical language routines embedded in the program to help all students learn the language of mathematics, which is not something we're all inherently born knowing. And then in terms of specifically looking at other supports in terms of tiered instruction, and that's part of that work that with instructional coaches, we've been really digging into this year. What are those differentiated supports that are available to help students to access that grade-level instruction? And how are we able to intervene as, and target the skills that students need? And all of that is embedded in each session of the instructional materials.
Great. Thank you. Okay, let's move to our, are there any how questions? We've done the who, what, why. Any how questions? I mean, just the one, how can we replicate whatever's happening in those other 45 schools? Or what, what, help us understand. It's not even about replicating, it's understanding.
One of the more powerful practices, thank you for coming back to that question, Madam President, one of the more powerful practices that we've done this year with both our instructional coaches and in the IC principal partnerships have been the sharing of strategies. So what is master scheduling strategies, right, to ensure that students have access to their wind time? We've been cross-pollinating ideas for how teams of teachers are planning and supporting the program and instruction in their buildings. Those are not things that we're coming up with. We are literally mining best practices from the principals and from the instructional coaches who are mining those practices from teachers. So we've created padlets where we're able to share that information so that colleagues are learning from each other. And in turn, it gives us an inkling on how we can further help and support the schools and principals as instructional leaders as well.
And thank you for that. You know, and that kind of brings up the how, how are we helping teachers? So that was my next question. So, and could you go to the slide where, yeah, yeah, this one, the implementation? So we, so when I look at, create structures and processes, and I have to remember, I mean, this is our second year. I mean, it's not like we've been doing this for 10 years. Are we on track to do, to meet our goal? That's just my own question to you guys as the professionals. Are we on track to meet our goals?
Yes, we are. We are confident that we are.
Dr. Beltran, do you want to?
She shook her head.
I share her confidence.
Member, Member Lessons.
Yeah, I have, maybe it's a depressing question, but budget deficits are a depressing conversation. At some point in the last couple of weeks, I read an article saying, I don't know, three quarters of districts in the country don't have tools to measure the efficacy of instructional coaches. Do we have a tool or tools to know that the investment in our instructional coaches, who I understand are then deployed to help? Do we have any tools to capture the utility of that investment? I mean, as we're going to be making very hard trade-offs, I want our teachers to be supported. But is it maybe better to put those instructional coaches in a classroom if we're confronted with something terrible like a $68 million deficit?
I defer to Dr. Beltran and our chief academic officer for that one.
I would say that we're currently in the process at looking at their efficacy and how we can better support schools. I would say, though, that the training that the ICs and the principals through Dr. Mason and her team have been very beneficial and that we are getting positive feedback from schools, but through principals with the trainings that they're receiving. And we're also getting calls from ICs for more support from Dr. Mason's team, specifically her teacher experts, she has two. And they're probably spending about 90% of their time in schools because they're being asked by schools to come support and help model or direct or train a little bit more. And so, you know, circling the wagons and based on what Mr. Visti said, we did have a, we did not have that ability to support schools in this manner last year because they were supporting by subbing. And so we're kind, we are in the process, though, of looking at the whole picture and how to best utilize our ICs. And so we could probably speak to that maybe later down the year because we're starting those conversations now.
Okay. Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So when we do our board self-eval, we use kind of a similar process where we're grading ourselves in terms of what's in progress and, you know, what we think we're, we think we're going to be in six months. The next time we review this data, do we anticipate that column two creates structures and processes? How much of that will be completed and where will we be in columns three, four, and five?
Yes, so I'm just tracking, you're on slide eight. Okay, so yes, we do anticipate. And to be transparent, when we look at some of the in-progresses, it's because we couldn't, all of the things were not complete, right? So we had to put in progress. But work has been happening and has iterated over time in every single area. It's just for, you know, to, you know, to be fair, we just couldn't put completed yet. But we are well on our way and continue to make progress from where we were last year to here, and then we'll continue that trend for next year.
Madam President, can I pull up?
Yes, you may.
And I appreciate the answer. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but if you had to identify a couple areas in column two that we were close to being complete, which would those be?
All right. So I would say in curriculum, I would say in professional learning and instruction, and that we are iterating very intentionally, but very fair assessment in data discussions and MTSS.
So that will be updated in the next round, maybe?
Yes.
Okay. All righty. So I think we are, the evaluation is that we are, was it on track or on target?
Near target.
Near, near target, okay. All right, so we are near target. And so our next, our next round will be January, February? Oh, December, okay, so, oh, to look at Alaska Star, yes. And I'm really excited to see that. I mean, I just want to see what we've gotten ourselves into as a state with the Alaska Star. All right. So seeing no other questions, I want to thank you guys. Thank you. That was part one. Part two of this discussion is the graduation, is a new report on our graduation rate. Dr. Bryant.
All right, thank you, Madam President. So we'll be discussing our interim indicator, which are graduation rates as it relates to our goal towards college career and life readiness. And just a reminder to the board, the reason why we're doubling up on these presentations is because we're still getting caught up as a result of the Alaska Star data being delayed. We're happy to report that we're in receipt of the data, cleaning it up, making sure that it's prepared for the board in the coming weeks, so stay tuned for that. But for now, we're still in catch-it mode. So with that being said, another piece of data that's hot off the press would be our graduation rates. So we are excited to share some interim information that we've received aligned to our college career and life readiness goal. So just so the public knows, what is our big-picture goal? Essentially, our goal is by 2026 achieving 90% proficiency in college, career, and life readiness. In a later slide, we'll see exactly what does that mean, how do we intend to measure that? But our interim indicator, our four-year graduation rates increasing to 90% and five-year graduation rates from high school increasing to 93%. So as this board knows and this superintendent knows, there are a number of ways to measure proficiency on college career and life readiness, and this is just one of several indicators that we're looking at to understand if we're on track. Graduating from high school is not the full answer to ensuring that you're prepared for life, college, and/or careers, but it's one that we will look at and monitor in addition to a wide variety of other metrics related to CCL. So going a little bit into the definitions, and again, the purpose of today is really just to introduce us to the technical conversation around the graphs and the data, so that way, this time in two weeks, we can begin discussing some of the how, the why, and other questions related to the programmatic strategies. But I did want to provide a definition for how do we define graduation rates? So essentially, what we do is we calculate these by dividing the number of students who graduated before June 30th of the reporting year with a high school diploma by a denominator of an adjusted graduation cohort of students who were enrolled in ninth grade either four years ago, which would be the top metric, or five years ago, which would be the bottom metric. And we're measuring our interim goals by looking at both, and there are slightly different metrics for both of those goals. So let's go ahead and get to the data. So again, we can discuss this more in depth at our next board meeting, but we did want to share that in 2015 and 16, the ASD four-year graduation rate from high school was at 79.7%. And our goal is to approach 90% by spring of 2026. So the dotted lines represent our yearly goal leading up towards 90% each year. And the solid line that you see on that graph are our historical graduation rates. And then the chart below that also provides the size of the graduation cohort. So that's information that you can digest in the coming days. The next graph, this will look familiar to what you've seen for previous goal monitoring conversations. This is formatted to show a comparison of the most recent two years of four-year graduation data, and it's also broken down by race. And it's also broken down by race, ethnicity, and special populations. And you'll also see at the bottom, the, the last four rows, they aggregate the graduation rates by the type of school. So we broke down our high schools by comprehensive data, alternative schools, charter schools, and special schools and programs. And we do define exactly what those schools are in the very last supplemental data slide. So this would be a great, um, resource for us to examine and study as we prepare for our discussion on what are we going to do to get towards our goal of over 90%. So this slide represents the four-year graduation rate data. As we look towards the next slide, um, this is looking at our five-year graduation rate goal. So again, it looks a little different than what you previously saw in the, in the last two slides, because that was on the four-year graduation rate. And this shows us our data towards our five-year graduation rate, which is, um, when we look back five years before a student graduates from high school. So as you can see here, uh, these next two slides are prepared identically to the last two that we saw. But this shows us our historical five-year graduation rates from high school, and then also the benchmarks that we'll look at going into the next several years. And then below, you'll see the chart where you can get a sense as to how large are these cohorts. Going on to the next slide, uh, again, this is the same information, our, uh, most recent two years of data. But, um, this is looking at the five-year graduation rate cohort. So some of the numbers will look a, a little different. But the data is put together in exactly the same way, where this will allow the board to understand the data as it relates to race and ethnicity, uh, also our special populations. And then lastly, what do graduation rates look like depending on what type of high school that you are attending? And then the other thing that we'll be discussing at our next goal monitoring discussion would be dropout rates. So a dropout rate is not, um, an inverse of a graduation rate, the way that we define it, um, here in ASD, according to our goal monitoring, uh, is a little different. So the first thing that you'll notice is that it's defined as an individual who was enrolled in the district at some time during the school year, whose enrollment was later terminated. But a dropout does not include an individual who graduated from high school or completed a state or district-approved education program as evidenced by receipt of a secondary school diploma. So in other words, you're not a dropout if you're transferring to another public school or private school or state or other district-approved education program, um, that results in a regular diploma. And, uh, dropout is also defined, is not defined as being temporarily absent due to a suspension. And it's not, a dropout is not defined as a student that was temporarily absent, uh, due to an illness. So we just want to be clear that this is a little bit more nuanced. And the other thing that you'll notice is that, um, this is measured from grade seven through 12. So in the, uh, following graphs, you'll notice that some of our, um, denominators, uh, or cohort numbers look a little different because we're looking at both high schools and also students that attend a secondary school. But the graph itself is formatted very similarly, where one, we can look at our goal progress. It states that, um, our historical trends as it relates to our dropout rates. It shows our most recent data related to the dropout rate. And then it also shows where we need to go, which would be a 2% dropout rate by the 25, 26 school year. And again, you'll notice that at the very bottom, there is a chart, um, that will show the board the data of historical dropout numbers. And those cohorts look differently again, because this includes secondary students, whereas the previous graphs only showed high school students. So if we look at the next slide, this is the same, uh, type of formatted chart, but this is for the dropout rates. So you'll notice that on the second column, that's the October 4th, uh, student count. Again, the numbers look larger because we're measuring groups of students that include, um, those who attend middle schools in addition to the high school. But the format of the chart itself, uh, is very similar. So the board can examine this chart to understand trends for race and ethnicity, also our special populations, including economically disadvantaged students, as well as by type of high school. But you'll notice that here, because we define dropout slightly differently, that we can also look at comprehensive middle schools and what does that number look like along with that corresponding cohort number? So slightly, um, different information. And then the last few slides that we'll close with are related to the implementation strategy. So this is the how the administration intends to address the topic of dropout rates and graduation rates, as well as the status of our stages of implementation. So if we go to the next slide, this looks very similar to, to what we've seen in previous discussions. This really describes philosophy and our cycle of continuous improvement that's driven by data, but also executed through professional development and coursework and community partnerships. And then the, the last slide is really the, the one of great substance as it relates to those how. So this looks slightly different from the math and reading discussions, because this breaks down our graduation and dropout rate strategy into four major pillars, um, which includes college and career and life readiness overall. You'll see strategic action steps that the administration has planned to address that. But then we also break down college, career, and life readiness into their own separate pillars, um, because there are a number of ways that students can have a, a post-secondary outcome. And we'll be measuring progress along the college readiness, the career readiness, uh, and the life readiness. So we'll be prepared to discuss where we're at in terms of implementation, what the plans are, and perhaps what things that we want, uh, to adjust to ensure that we get to where we need to be, to ensure that as many students as possible graduate from ASD and go on to their college, career, and life readiness outcomes. So, uh, that concludes the bulk of the presentation. Really, the last one will just give the, the board and the public a clear reminder of how we define a comprehensive high school versus an alternative high school charter and so on and so forth. So you understand what you're looking at when it comes to what does this data mean? Which actual schools are we looking at? And then some are listed as dropout only, uh, because again, we define dropout as being from grade seven to 12. So those are the specific middle schools that we're referring to for those charts related to dropout. Yes. And that concludes the, the technical presentation.
Thank you. So, uh, did you have a, a question, Member Higgins?
Yes.
Because we won't discuss it till the next time, but if you had a technical question.
I'll defer until later if you want, but.
No, if you have a, just a technical thing.
Yes, just, I know that the graduation rates for the major high schools, for example, doesn't incorporate the number of kids that may be transferred to SAVE or other programs. That kind of offsets a little bit what the graduation rate is. That's been an issue in the past, so I'll just sort of share that. But then the other question is, one of the things that went, I remember in 2008, I got on the board, it was over six, almost six and a half percent graduation, uh, dropout rate. It was huge. And the goal was to get it down to half. But when they got it down that low, they said about half of the ones that drop out were dropping out every year. Do we have any, any process like that? Because it, it kind of inflates how many people really off lot are dropping out when you look at the rate and if it's the same one. It's kind of a positive statement to me that, that we, we got kids struggling, dropping out, we're trying to come back. And so it's kind of inflating how many kids were really at risk with the dropout, because it, it's the same group. Or about half.
Yeah, I think that's a great, uh, question that, that we should have during our discussion at the next board meeting. And then we'll be prepared to discuss some of the nuances between how a transfer can impact a graduation and/or dropout rate, uh, as, as well as what that means depending on where a student chooses to go for their placement, say they leave their initial school. Yeah.
Okay. So we got our first question for next time. Thank you, Member Higgins. Yes, Member Lessons?
Thank you. Is there, is there a reason that we are not tracking and disaggregating our graduation rates according to either sex or gender? Because it's my understanding that at a college level, we do see distinctions, that more young women are graduating than young men. And I just did a quick search and it looks like maybe there's an unreported gender gap in our high school graduation rates. And I think that if we pursued that, then perhaps we could target interventions strategically. So I just, is there a reason why that's not on our?
Uh, I can't speak to any sort of historical reason why gender would have been excluded. But I'm seeing, hearing this question for the first time, I'm certainly open to obtaining that data, assuming that we have it for all of the indicators that we're measuring. Sometimes I understand that assessments don't necessarily ask students to report their gender. That might be one potential issue. But assuming that we have the data and we can link it consistently across all of our assessments, I think it's something that we should look at. There are a number of large urban districts that create programs that specifically address gaps, uh, for gender. Um, and in addition to the research that you cited that impacts students at the post-secondary level. In my previous district, there were a lot of gaps that we saw for, um, boys of color specifically. And there are programs that we could put in place to intervene for those groups. So that's something I'm interested in looking at.
Yeah, that's a great point, Member Lessons. Okay, so I do need, uh, the board's consideration. Going back to our, our math report, we need to accept that report. Since we, we, I need a motion to accept it. We usually accept it right at the end of discussion.
Madam President, I'll move to accept the, uh, 2022, 2023 goal monitoring report on math proficiency presented tonight.
Moved in second to accept the, um, math proficiency report, as discussed tonight. I think we need just a minute to set up our vote.
Madam President, my computers.
Okay, you can do a voice, we can do a voice vote then. Whenever you're ready, ma'am.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Higgins? President Bellamy?
Yes.
And Student Representative Shaw?
Yes.
I appreciate that. And that motion passes. Uh, six ayes, one absent. Thank you. All right, so that brings us. Uh, thank you, Dr. Bryant, for the, uh, college and career ready report. We will, um, discuss that report next meeting. That brings us to our public comment period, our first hour of public comment. Um, so we again like to welcome everyone here. Uh, the board has set aside a one-hour time slot at the beginning of the meeting and another hour at the end for those, uh, who did not get an opportunity to comment during the first hour. During public comment, board members will not answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. It's the public's time to speak and the board's time to listen. The school board welcomes the public to observe and contribute to our meetings through their comments. However, to be productive, our meetings must be structured and civil. We use Robert's Rules of Order to set our, uh, to, to, Robert's Rules of Order, uh, to set our meetings, uh, to set up our meetings in an orderly way. These rules require the board and public to be civil and respectful of each other's opinion. And therefore, we ask that there, there is no attack of a member or speaker's motives, no profanity or foul language. And as you entered into the boardroom, there is a blue and white sheet that really goes over the same, um, decorum rules and participation guidelines. Uh, refrain from disturbing the meeting. No cheering, applauding, outbursts, or waving of signs or posters. If you have, uh, handouts that you wish to share with the board, please give them to Amanda Foster seated to my left. And she will make sure every board member will get a copy of your handout. As a president of the board, it is my duty to enforce these rules of civility and decorum. As such, and consistent with Robert's Rules of Order, I have the authority to rule any speaker out of order for violation of these rules, uh, and, and guidelines, or fails to conduct him or herself in a civil manner, civil manner. We have made space for our students on our agenda. Uh, and so there will be students in the room. So we, we really want our decorum to be, uh, a model for them. Any additional information, uh, can be found, as I said, on the handout that's at the door. So with that, we are going to open our, we're gonna call our first speaker. We, uh, San, Santiago Menendez. Welcome, Santiago. You have three minutes.
Hello. I'd like to start by saying thank you for taking some time of your day to listen to me. First of all, I would like to emphasize the balance I have observed of sports and, um, education. I have been playing soccer for most of my life and I've played for many coaches. And almost all of them have been really understanding about the balance between education and sports. They all, um, they all want everybody to succeed in school. So they have a saying that they tell everybody, which is, if you're a student athlete, student must come first. And if you're not succeeding in school, they, um, encourage you to take some time out of your day to focus on school and homework. My team has started to do a study time thirty minutes before practice. Our, and our coaches really care about the student's education. I would also like to talk about the importance of soccer to my family. My dad, who is an immigrant from El Salvador, came to the USA when he was sixteen. He wanted to play soccer here because in El Salvador, he played with the men's league of his town. So playing soccer in USA meant a lot to him and reminded him of home and his culture. It was also a source of motivation to do good in school and socialize more. Did not know English well, but with the communication of soccer, he learned it about a lot faster than he could have without it. Right now, my dad is an entree for the state of Alaska and has made a family. I'm also playing, I'm playing soccer in college. And I feel that soccer in high school really prepares you for that, because it prepares you for, um, prepares you for the mental stability that you need to be playing soccer in college. Much like how middle school prepares you for high school. Me and my family also have also made a lot of memories watching and playing soccer. And I know many kids much like me look forward to playing and watching soccer in the future. In conclusion, I feel that high school soccer poses you to do good in school, lets you think about your future. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Santiago. Next, we have, uh, via phone, Danielle Kim. I don't see him in the queue. Thank you. Let's go with, uh, I think Garrett Leib in person. Welcome, sir. You have three minutes.
Hello there, uh, my name is Garrett Leib. I have a special need boy, um, that go to your, uh, SPS school. First one was Lakewood Elementary, second one is Waylys. Um, the first year we got, where the, um, there was three incidents that happened to my son. Nobody ever called me back. Nobody's ever reached back out to me. Uh, my son was assaulted. He was chased down on the school ground with a pair of, well, I was first told by a letter opener, by the principal. And nobody ever called me when the incident happened. My son told me when he got home. So I called, she didn't even know about it, Ms. Collier at Lakewood. And, um, I, I tried to reach out to get to help for it. Nobody's ever called me back. And when she did call me back, she had, went on to say I had a representative and so and so group at my home that, because I was working with them for resources. And she went on to tell me, you know, Garrett Leib, when you're at the school, you are so nice. But when you're on the phone, you are so ugly. That is so unprofessional. My son, he would chase down, what she told me, oh, it wasn't a letter opener. It was only a pair of scissors, is what she told me. If I would have done that, I would have been in jail. Okay, second incident happened outside the school, Lakewood. He was beat up. He came home with two black eyes. He had braces on at, at the time. He had, he had, his mouth was all cut up. I called the police. I called the police, took four hours for them to get there, but they took pictures of it, I got pictures of. Again, I will, somebody will get back to you. His homeroom teacher didn't even know what happened. And Mr. Bryant, when I was here the last time, I talked to you outside in the hallway, you said somebody from your administration would call me or you'd call me. My phone number is nine oh seven five four five eight one seven five, I gave you that phone number. Never heard back from anybody. And I'd like to hear from somebody. Because my son was assaulted twice at Lakewood, third incident, Whalies. Some kid called him the B word. He has autism, ODD, ADD, ADHD. And that doesn't work out for kids like him, being called names, he doesn't like it. So he, he got mad. He was rushed by five adults, including a nurse that was there. When they called me, the police called me, you need to come get your son or else he's gonna become a felon at thirteen years old with special needs. You guys got jail cells in your, in your class, in your school, you guys call them refocus rooms. The one I went to several times at Lakewood, that has a button on the wall, two doors that you gotta unlock to get into that room where that button's at. I found my son crying, he couldn't even hardly breathe, there was a four hundred and fifty pound white male there, three hundred and fifty pound Samoan guy there, and nothing was done, and I want to be heard.
Thank you, Mr. Lee, we will make sure someone gets back to you.
Okay, I really do, it's been over and over and over, and nothing's been done.
Thank you, sir.
Very disturbing.
Thank you. Next, we have Krista Sandhoffner. Did I say it right?
My name is Krista Sandhoffner, and I've been teaching in the Anchorage School District for eighteen years. For the last sixteen years, I've been a fifth and sixth grade teacher at CLAT Elementary School. As you are aware, CLAT was one of the six elementary schools proposed to close at the end of this year. I am here tonight to speak to you as not only an affected, affected educator, but as an advocate for my students' families that are not able to have a voice because they have not been given the chance to understand what ASD is proposing. As an educator, I'm aware of the extreme economic, economic deficit we are facing, and that changes need to occur. In this process, misallocated spending needs to be brought forward. For example, hiring an out-of-state demographer rather than using school district employees or local community members to research our district zoning is financially irresponsible. A public request about how much was spent on this demographer has yet been provided. In addition to the school district not being forthcoming with the cost of the demographer, the data that was collected, as well as a full report, has not been provided to the public for discussion. Regarding this issue, a public records request was filed, and in response to this filing, it was stated that there is not a full report as requested. All of Mr. Biggum's data is proprietary as it is on his software systems. He generates the PowerPoint information from his data set. And we, ASD leadership teams, discuss lots of inputs, but there isn't a written document to provide beyond the presentation to the school board. A follow-up request was done regarding any minutes notes that are available, and the response again was, the district does not have a record that would meet that request and is not required to create reports in response to public records request. Accountability as educators is expected and continually being publicly scrutinized. Yet our public educational institution at its administrative level is opaque and unaccountable to the taxpayers. It doesn't seem honest or equitable. As an ASD employee, parent, and a community member, it is extremely concerning about the lack of transparency with this initial proposal. How did a ninety-two percent capacity school make this list? Besides a lack of, lack of transparency on the criteria, results, and data, we have received zero guidance from the district. Two weeks ago, we were told by a district employee that we are all guaranteed a job in the district next year. When we asked what we needed to do as far as if we would be placed in a position or if we needed to interview, et cetera, the response was, those are good questions. With mental health as a priority in ASD, doing this to its employees and families seems extremely contradictory. I am not naive to the fact that we are in need of a change in order to overcome our economic deficit we are facing. However, in my eighteen years in this district, I have not felt as strong as I do that closing CLAT Elementary is not only an inequitable decision, but will also cause drastic implications on the diversity of our community. I've touched on some inequities so far, both tonight and in my letter you all received last week. But there will be, without a doubt, many more brought to our.
Thank you, Ms. Sandhoffner. Thank you, guys. Next, Jessica Lurs. Did I say that right, Lurs? Lourdes.
Lourdes, thank you. Good evening, my name is Jessica Lourdes, I'm speaking tonight in regards to the recommendation to close CLAT Elementary School. I have two children at CLAT, we've been there for six years, since my oldest started kindergarten. I've been the CLAT PTA president for two years, and I'm a president of the Diamond Estates neighborhood where I've been for almost thirteen years. I'd like to start by calling attention that I was at this table two months ago, testifying to the unique needs of the Diamond Estates community with a busing shortage and the inequitable impact of that busing rotation. I'm grateful for your swift action, and I'm here to bring attention to ongoing communication inequities in our district. Two months ago, I brought attention to the lack of equitable communication for our families for whom English is not a first language, who may not speak or read English, which resulted in a lack of understanding and misunderstanding. So here we are once again, misinformation abounds. We have families who think the school is closing in December. We have families who think the district is closing. How can they communicate the impact of this potential closure on their families? And how can you fully understand that impact if the district cannot provide the information that impacts our families so drastically in an equitable way? The district prides itself on its diversity. It prides itself on more than ninety-five languages spoken in the school district. Yet the reality we are experiencing is that the district doesn't have concern for the families whose voices are often the quietest because of the numerous barriers that must be overcome in order for their voice to be heard in the first place. Second, I'd like to address the board's comments regarding Diamond Estates, the last school board meeting. I commend you for your increasing awareness of the unique challenges of this community and for the action that has been taken on its behalf. I will be clear and succinct. I am an advocate for our middle school and high school students to be rezoned to schools that are closer to our neighborhood. However, I am not an advocate for uprooting our elementary students to achieve that outcome. Yes, Campbell would be closer in distance, but our neighborhood would still require busing. And the multi-generational student and teacher network of support, culture of welcome and safety, and the unique educational programs, opportunities, and clear data proven outcomes achieved at present at CLAT is not the answer. I look forward to expounding on these aspects of CLAT in future testimony. Finally, CLAT PTA held an information and listening session at our school in regard to this closure last week. We also talked about advocacy at that meeting, and I reminded parents that the first step to making real change, especially strategic change, begins with connection, listening, and understanding. If you want to make things right for Diamond Estates students, please start by connecting and listening to Diamond Estates families. Over the next couple of months, you will be hearing from representatives from the entire CLAT community and the impact that this recommendation has on our school. I urge you to go out of your way to find ways to connect with our students, with our staff, and with our families. I urge you to pay attention to what is being said and whose voice is missing. I urge you to seek to understand the impact and be willing to make equitable decisions based on vision for our children rather than on deficit.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Dana, or is it Dana Hollering? Dana, welcome Dana, you have thirty, thirty minutes, three.
Thirty minutes, I can talk for thirty minutes. Good evening, my name is Dana Hollering, tonight I'm here to speak regarding the CLAT Elementary's potential closure. I'm here to advocate for my little guy who cannot advocate for himself. He attends CLAT in the structured learning classroom, or SLC. Originally, he was zoned for Rabbit Creek, I know that came up at the last meeting. I urge the board before making any decisions about CLAT to please educate and know exactly what this classroom is set up for and what is required to have one of these classes as part of your decision-making progress. Students in these classes need this setup as their least restrictive environment for education. Most of these students in these classes have problems with change, transition, sensory, and other challenges. The pandemic caused these children in these classrooms to regress. And they are just now starting to give back that trust in the system to operate without interruption. And I'm asking you to carefully consider the chaos, a school closure, and a move just as these children are starting to trust that the school where they are at is going to be in session and that they are familiar with, with what this is gonna do to their progression. Often, an SLC classroom will consist of several grade levels. I would like to bring the attention to the board that CLAT Elementary had so many kindergartner students, they actually have an SLC class that is strictly kindergarten. The next class is a kindergarten through second grade, and they have a third classroom for three through six. The report that you received only had two structured learning classrooms listed. Your consultant was in error there. It was never mentioned the occupancy of Ocean View or Campbell, where these general education students will be going. What scares me and what makes me very nervous is apparently there is no plan for the structured learning classrooms, children, that has been announced. What has been said and what we have heard is that the students that are moving to Ocean View and to Campbell, the students will not be able to follow them with their peers that they have made friends with over this time. I have never had one instance where I have been nervous or afraid or worried about my student being mixed in with his peers at this school. They have been completely open and accepting, and they include them in the general things that are happening, the activities. And I would hope that this board would take that into consideration as well, that wherever you're going to be moving, if you do, and I hope you don't, move these students to, it's going to take some serious training if they don't have experience with these students to include them as they have been at CLAT. I have a lot of questions, and I know we have some open town halls coming up. And I will be there, and I will be asking my question.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mina Hancock. Mina, there, are you Mina? Okay, welcome. You have three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Mina Hancock. I use they/them pronouns, and I'm in active recovery from an eating disorder. You may be wondering why I'm telling you all of these seemingly sensitive things about myself without knowing you or anyone else in the room. I'm, this is because I am passionate about creating change and starting uncomfortable, yet increasingly important conversations. Now for a little bit about me. I grew up in Anchorage, Alaska, I attended school at Trailside Elementary, Hanshu Middle School, and Service High School. I was an athlete on the cross-country running team and the cross-country skiing team and competed at the state level for both competitions. I was smart and did well in all of my classes. I got into a good college and continued to do well in school. But when I came home from UC Santa Cruz for Christmas my freshman year, everyone immediately knew something was wrong. Five days later, I was admitted to the hospital. After six months in out-of-state treatment, I have come home and started attending UAA, and I'm currently completing my freshman year. I never heard much about eating disorders, and once I came home, I realized how little awareness there is for them. Today, I am speaking with you because I have partnered with the two-time Olympian and licensed therapist Holly Brooks and the Alaska Eating Disorder Alliance, shortened to ACITA, to have you, the Anchorage School District, help create lifesaving change within our community. Holly Brooks and ACITA have created a free educational documentary called Winning at All Costs, Breaking the Silence on Athletes and Eating Disorders. And I have made it my personal mission to help share this resource. This is where we need your help. As a group that influences the lives of thousands of adolescents, you can create immense change and provide extremely important awareness. I asked you to send out this video to all of the school nurses, health teachers, academic teachers, counselors, coaches, gym teachers, and every other influential person in our schools. Provide them with the start of a much-needed conversation. Provide them with the space to increase awareness. Reach out to provide more resources. Help train your medical staff to be cognizant of the early warning signs of eating disorders. This is what I'm asking you to do. I'm asking you to give your staff the resources to save countless numbers of young lives from having to go through the traumatic experience of an eating disorder. I am in active recovery from my eating disorder and have grown along the way into someone beautiful and proud of the work that I have done. But if I hadn't had the help and resources to stop it from killing me, I would not be here talking to you today. Thank you, and consider this video and my words a catalyst for change.
Thank you, Mina. Next, we have Marnie Hartill. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Hi, thank you so much for your time. My name is Marnie Hartill, I'm speaking as an individual. It's incredibly valuable to have these deep conversations about our education policies, our priorities with our community, our faculty, administrators, and our students. And I hope, I hope parents attend those continued conversations at the town halls coming this week and throughout the month. While I hope that the school board would make the right choices, putting students first, I know deep down that these are all going to be difficult decisions, hard choices, no matter how you look at them, they'll be detrimental to students' success. Earlier this evening during an ASD boardwork session, I watched online as sweeping program changes were presented. Discussion spanned from various sizes of toilets in some schools to expansion of pre-K programming, to planning eighth-grade graduation ceremonies for language immersion students. At one point in the discussion, an administrator was asked what they thought candidly about the projected changes to a valuable program that they led for many, many years. Yes, it's their passion, these kids are our passion. The staff member paused, took a breath, and said something like, I don't know how to respond, I'm not prepared with words. I am feeling this way as well. I'm not sure I have words to express the situation that we ASD see before us. Do you prioritize the things that benefit the few, or do you put the needs of the larger group first? Are we talking about programmatic changes? Or are we talking about programmatic cuts? A friend of mine gave me a big purple sign. It encourages us all to vote for kids, not cuts. So now's the time for us to put those signs back in our yards. I moved here in two thousand and nine because I believed that Alaska had a better grip on appropriately funding public schools than other states. I've seen education funding here deteriorate since the governorships of Parnell, Walker, and Dunleavy. I've watched veto powers used against K-12 and higher education far too many times. As since two thousand and fourteen, Alaska has fallen one hundred and twenty million dollars behind inflation on school funding. In two thousand and fifteen, Walker allowed a five-year stop to the school bond debt reimbursement program. Within those two years, Walker permitted over eighty million dollars in education cuts. And in two thousand and sixteen, he vetoed roughly fifty-five million dollars in public education funds. And when Dunleavy took office in two thousand and eighteen, he proposed the biggest education cuts in state history. Since then, Dunleavy has continued to veto education funding each year. I moved here to this grand community thirteen years ago, and I wonder how we're doing now. Has Anchorage School District improved since then? One thing is for certain, if we do not send pro-public education candidates to JuNo, these cuts will only continue.
Thank, thank you very much. Next, we have Jessica Cook. And following Jessica, we have Joel Potter. Welcome.
Good evening, President Bellamy, board members, and Superintendent Bryant. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm taking my campaign hat off and speaking to you not as a candidate, but as a twenty-two-year veteran ASD teacher, someone who wants children to succeed and reach their greatest potential, and as a proud product of the Anchorage School District. I'm also speaking as a parent to offer my best advice about how our community can avoid a repeat of facing these terrible decisions year after year in the future. Like districts around the state, ASD is facing the consequences of flat funding from the state. You've heard the governor say this awful decision about closing schools is the community's fault, the school board's fault, the city's fault. It's poor budgeting, the state bears no responsibility. I want to share a few facts so parents and community members can speak knowledgeably with their legislators and governor in the future. Because this problem falls squarely on the state for allowing education funding to lag almost every year. School funding has fallen more than one hundred and twenty million dollars behind inflation since two thousand and fourteen. This year, we had nine percent inflation and a funding increase of half that. State funding has fallen behind inflation, and now you're faced with these hard decisions. There are so many wonderful opportunities our students have for learning and growing in the Anchorage School District that can open doors to bright futures and opportunities and possibilities, and no one wants to take any of those possibilities and opportunities away. Yet, that's what we're discussing here tonight and in the coming weeks. Why can't the city put more money and, and make up for these state shortfalls to ensure our students? students have access to the best education? This is what parents and community members need to know as they approach their legislators and governor, so we don't have these fights year after year. Well, local school funding is capped at a percentage of the amount of state funding the district receives under state law. This year, like most years, Anchorage is contributing as much as they legally are allowed to by state law. So unless state funding goes up, the city's ability to contribute more cannot. That is what I want parents and community members to tell their elected state officials. State decisions have limited the options allowed at the local level. The lower state fundiness, the fewer municipal funds are allowed to be put into our schools. My hope is that community members make state leaders pay attention to how these budget chasms have been created and acknowledge how these voids are being dealt with. The students and families to whom I have devoted my career educating and serving are paying the cost for state's fiscal irresponsibility. So for now, I leave these most difficult and heart-wrenching decisions in your hands. I thank you for your time, and most importantly, I thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Next, Joel Potter. And following Joel, we'll have Mary Krusten. Welcome, Joel. You have three minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Joel Potter. I am a professor of philosophy at the University of Alaska Anchorage and a resident of Nunaka Valley neighborhood. I'm here to ask district leadership and the board to rethink the plan to close six of our elementary schools, including Wonder Park and Nunaka Valley Elementary. Consolidation comes with hidden costs, not the least of which may be a loss of enrollment when families are deprived of walkable schools. I encourage the board to take a critical eye to the claimed benefits of consolidation and to study what research has shown nationally about what actually results. A large body of evidence supports the value of small schools, like those currently proposed for closure. They have been found to foster a greater sense of belonging, to have better attendance and completion rates, to have markedly lower incidence of violence and vandalism, and higher reported teacher satisfaction. All these things contribute to better educational outcomes. I encourage the board to take a closer look at population and birth rates. While population in Anchorage was flat, the three census tracts that Wonder Park and Nunaka Valley Elementary serve together grew in population by 6.7% from 2010 to 2020. I also encourage the board to be skeptical about projected increases or decreases in population, since we are coming out of a pandemic and there is a large and there's large and unpredictable migration in and out of Alaska under normal circumstances. If the board moves forward with this plan and pursues additional closures in the future, the negative population projection might become a self-fulfilling prophecy, since multiple neighborhoods will become less desirable places to live without their schools. The plan to close six schools serving over 1,500 students represents the only budget solution publicly recommended thus far. It was recommended before any endorsed plan for administrative reductions, reductions in extracurricular activities or sports, or the postponement or cancellation of infrastructure projects. To me, this communicates a problem of priorities and an apparent lack of vision for our school district. Closure of these schools should be presented as an option of last resort. Neighborhood schools matter. Neighborhood elementary schools are the heart of their communities. They're places of belonging that make education visible to students and their communities. There's untapped potential to make our neighborhood schools even more dynamic centers for community life and learning. Right now, Anchorage has a neighborhood elementary school system, but this could easily be lost to a series of consolidations. Given the known benefits of such schools, I ask the board to pause and consider how, what we have in the-
Thank you, sir. Mary, welcome. Mary Krusten, followed by Destin Dezu.
Good evening. I am a community member who lives in Nunaka Valley. I speak tonight in opposition to the proposed school consolidation plan. Nunaka Valley Elementary School enrolls the most pre-kindergarten kids in the Anchorage School District. As special ed and pre-K are capped at smaller class sizes, the neighborhood of Nunaka is questioning if this capped classroom ratio is reflected in the reported capacity numbers of the school. Nunaka is a true neighborhood school, as many kids walk or are on their own for transportation as they live within one and a half miles of the school. Few buses are needed to keep this school accessible to so many. Families chose to live in Nunaka for its walkability, myself included. In a time of climate change and expensive fuel, I question closing a school in our neighborhood that is actually walkable. The school promotes learning through its unique Anchorage setting. It is adjacent to Russian Jack Trails and other parks. It has inspiring mountain views, and the neighborhood roads are safe with little traffic. There's so much potential for outdoor learning at this building. A volunteer Nunaka Valley Community Patrol, complete with an actual patrol car, helps at the school's crosswalk, and neighbors such as myself will volunteer at a school-based ski program for the older elementary kids this winter. It is a Title I school, providing meals and resources for students whose families may be struggling in these expensive times. Over the pandemic years, these same students' learning may have suffered disproportionately compared to students at schools serving more affluent families. It feels unfair to shift their familiar school environment one more time. Nunaka Valley staff know their students and families well, as they've taught sets of siblings throughout the years. Research shows a small school environment can individually and immediately attend to kids' needs, preventing specialist interventions for issues that become even more costly down the road if not caught early. For example, counseling, tutoring, and occupational therapy. I understand the six ASD schools suggested foreclosure will not be the last cuts if state budget funding for kids' education is not increased. Many more loved schools and programs will suffer. I plan to vote accordingly. I grew up in Alaska and am a nurse who chose to live in Anchorage. Please keep Anchorage a city I want to keep paying taxes and living in by reconsidering the closure of these schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is it Destin? Destin Dezu? He's not here. Laura McNam? I don't think I said that right. Oh, good. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Laura McNam. Can you hear me? I'm a mother of two young children, and we live in Nunaka Valley. And I'm a special education teacher, working at Nunaka Valley Elementary. I'm speaking up against the proposed school closure of Nunaka Valley Elementary. I understand that the Anchorage School District has systematically been underfunded for years, forcing the school board and the administration to make difficult decisions currently. However, if you decide to close Nunaka Valley Elementary, a small neighborhood school located in a vibrant neighborhood community, you are taking away a valuable asset that has so much to offer. First, Nunaka Valley Elementary provides many characteristics of a trauma-sensitive school. It is a small school located in one of the oldest Anchorage neighborhoods surrounded by small houses. The principal, the staff, and the community in the neighborhood understand the importance of creating a warm and safe space for students. This is a must, since the school is serving the largest population of preschoolers in the district. Because of its small size, teachers are able to make deeper individual connections with the students and families. Teachers can easily collaborate to react to a particular student's needs. The principal and the administrative staff know every single student by name and often their family members. It is a real school family. I have only taught there for a few months, but I already feel very much part of the family. The families who live in the neighborhood move there because of its walkability. Realistically, students will not be able to walk to Chester Valley. Families will reconsider living in the area and potentially move away. This is a social and economic loss for the community, for East Anchorage, and potentially for the entire city. Last, I would like to have two facts reviewed that I cannot trust. One, I know that Nunaka Valley Elementary has almost all classrooms in use due to the large preschool program, so how can the utilization percentage only be 66%? And in addition to that, I would like to know what the birth rate for a specific school zone is. Having lived in this area for four years, my understanding is that more and more families are having babies who are potentially Nunaka Valley students in the very near future. In closing, I would like to say again, closing the doors at Nunaka Valley Elementary will be a loss of a valuable asset to both the community and the school district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We have four more, and then we'll take a recess. Scott McClure and Jay McDonald. Welcome. You have three minutes.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Members of the board, Madam President, thank you very much. I'm here as a parent and a volunteer. I found out about this a little bit too recently to actually develop any prepared remarks, but I'd like to take a moment, interrupt the conversation for the purpose of talking about one of our cultural programs, the Japanese immersion program in particular. It came to my attention that the Japanese immersion program is facing some potential cuts, as all programs are being looked at because of the environmental restrictions that we're facing. It is important to me that we have a little bit of a discussion on the return on investment. The Japanese immersion program is extremely low-cost, particularly because the parents volunteer. So I put my home up for three years running. I've committed to doing so again, where we bring in Japanese teaching interns into our home for three to four months at a time. And it is important to realize that those teaching interns are unpaid, and they're working in the schools as additional support. So as far as return on investment is concerned, the parents are putting their homes forward for lodging costs and food, and the teachers themselves are getting additional support at no additional cost. So the Japanese immersion program is an exceptional return on investment from an economic standpoint. From a social standpoint, it's also important to realize the Japanese immersion program is a small fish in a big pond. The problem that we're facing is we're seeing lower rates of volunteerism, and it's extremely dependent upon that to make it cost-effective. So one of the things that I've noticed in my recent heavily invested time, I've been a member of their program for 12 years now, but the last two years, I've been extremely involved in volunteerism, and I've just recently volunteered to write for a grant proposal. I'm helping with developing an international concert next year entirely based on grants. The struggle that we're facing is that the Tomonokai community, which is the immersion program in academia, the Japan-Alaska community, the Japan-Alaska Association, the Tomodachi Daiko community, these programs are facing a dissolution because of the lack of volunteerism through the COVID problem. With our high school students and our middle school students bringing the continuity into their adult lives within this program, those students are bringing those volunteers in later in their life. And so I won't take up the entire amount of time, but it is important, please, to consider that when you're doing this very difficult, complex work that you're facing, more so than just complicated, please consider that you have an exceptional return on investment for this particular program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Jay McDonald. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Yep. Good evening. I'd like to, so I'm Jay McDonald. I'm a parent in the area, and I'd like to talk about state laws. So State Statute 14.30.361, paragraph B states, and I quote, "Before curriculum, literature, or materials related to sex education, human reproduction education, or human sexuality education may be used in a class or program or distributed in a school, the curriculum, literature, or materials must be both approved by the school board and available for parents to review," end quote. So that's important because in August 2020, the school board published a memo stating that, "In accordance with the following guidelines," and I'm quoting here, "notification of a student's parent about his or her gender identity expression or transition is unnecessary, as they are already aware and may be supportive. In some cases, however, notifying parents carries risk for the student if the family does not support the student's desire to transition. Prior to notification of any parent or guardian regarding the transition process, school staff should work closely with the student to assess the degree to which, if any, the parent guardian will be involved in the process, considering all times, the health, well-being, and safety of the transitioning student," end quote. So the obvious question there is, what authority does the school board have to override state statutes and cut parents out of the conversation? School officials are not therapists. They don't have a patient, provide a relationship with kids, and minors can't give consent. It's also disturbing, considering that there are other board policies that are still in the book, stating, and I quote, "At the parent guardian's request, any student may be excused from any part of family, life, sex education instruction," end quote. How can parents exercise rights to opt out when officials are intentionally hiding these materials and conversations from the parents? It's not just about socially and sexually transitioning kids at school. It's also about the materials that are being put in front of them. So I'd like to read an excerpt from one of the award-winning books that's just recently been purchased for libraries at Bartlett Diamond Eagle River East, Service South, Romeg, with at least 25 checkouts. It's titled "Beyond Magenta," and I quote, "I was sexually mature. What I mean by sexually mature is that I knew about sex. From six up, I used to kiss guys in my neighborhood, make out with them, and perform oral sex on them. I liked it. I used to love oral, and I touched their you-know-whats. We were really young, but that's what we did. I was making out with girls, too. I used to love making out with girls because everybody thought I was cool. Everyone was encouraging me. Look, Frank's not gay, he's making out with a girl. They wanted to know how the hell I learned to kiss like that. I didn't know how I learned it was pretty weird. Guys used to hit on me, perverts, pedophiles. I'd see the guys giving me a look, and it kind of creeped me out. They would touch themselves."
Thank you very much. Your time is up, sir. Thank you. Next, we have Jason Kiwakowski. I'm sorry if I did not pronounce that correctly. And then followed by Jessie Thacker. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Jason Kwitkowski. I'm a parent at Aquarian Charter School. I serve on the Aquarian Academic Policy Committee. I'm providing commentary on Consent Agenda Item 7, ASD Memorandum 44, Award of Negotiated Guaranteed Maximum Price for the Aquarian Charter School renovations. On behalf of the Aquarian Academic Policy Committee, we support a delay of the negotiated guaranteed maximum price award. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir. Jessie Thacker. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Jarrett and distinguished ladies and gentlemen of the board, appreciate your time. It really is encouraging that all of you have taken, you know, time to run for these positions because you care about kids and the character development. And as far as educating them, all the signs right here show it. Math, reading proficiency. I don't see anything about art and music, though. It's a little disappointing. But one of the big concerns we have, the purpose of the education is functionality and operation and career-minded, you know, functions in our society to be able to operate. Overall, through that education we create and build beautiful things, from buildings to families. But the biggest concern lately is the information that's being put in our school libraries. We have a series of these books, much like Mr. McDonald had mentioned. There was one called Gender Queer. The other one is, this book is really gay, and these happen to focus on homosexuality, but I am sure there's other ones that are heterosexualities and trisexualities, whatever it may be. These are horribly inappropriate and actually come close to violating state law, Alaska Statute 1161123, which is anybody under 16 exposed to pornography, that's a Class C felony. And I would dare say that any one of you people would want to read these books to your kids or grandkids at a bedtime story. They also have the Anarchist Cookbook. That's at our school. They also have the Anarchist Cookbook, that's not in our school, but they have many other, they're public domain information that are totally inappropriate. And dare I say, immoral, wicked, horrible. These should not be in our schools. That's not the purpose of our schools, to teach these items, which are horribly inappropriate for young children. These are things that adults in their own privacy as adults, when you get to make the decision of what you want to do with your body and your life, that's your right as an American. We should not be exposing our kids to this wickedness. It's horrible. And I would be ashamed to have to read this in front of anyone. I will not go to such a length to do so. Your sexuality is your private information, should not be on public, if you want to put that stuff, it'll come back to haunt you later, but that's what our kids should be safe from, our schools are supposed to be safe. And that should be vetted out of every library in there, I don't care what it deals with. So at that point, I would beseech you guys to look into this and ferret this out, it has no place to teach functionality, reading, writing, math, beauty, okay? And I'll end with Proverbs 22:6, "Train up a young man in the way, and he will not depart from it when he's old." Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And right now we'll take a, that's the end of our first hour of public comment. We'll take a five-minute break, be back in the room at 8 o'clock. We'd like to welcome everyone back. Oops, he lost the doctor. We're missing, I just saw Member Higgins. He's gone again. Dr. Bryant, we need him, too. Do we know where Dr. Bryant is? You can learn how to. All right, we'd like to welcome everybody back. I would like to just announce that you will find written public comment attached to the agenda as well, if there are any. This brings us to item E, Consent Agenda.
So Madam President, are you going to open the floor to have items pulled from the Consent Agenda before we?
Yes.
So with that said.
This is where we are.
Okay. I would like to pull item seven, memorandum number 44, please.
Okay, that. Pull item seven, that will become item four under action, that's memorandum number 044. Any other board members want to pull anything from the Consent Agenda?
Madam President?
Yes.
Was what's showing on the website now updated to reflect the changes that were made a couple of days ago? They were moving eight and nine down to action items. Memo 45 and 47, there was an email saying they would move down to.
Yes, we moved, that is a change.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Because I felt they would get pulled anyway, so I moved them under action.
I just thought, I just wanted to know if the website actually reflected that, so the public would know, yeah.
Yes, thank you. Seeing no other, no one else willing to pull anything, we'll take a motion to approve.
So Madam President, I would move to approve the Consent Agenda as amended. Second.
Moved in second to approve the Consent Agenda as amended.
Have a pause for a second.
Sure. You good?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. The motion is to approve the Consent Agenda as amended. That amendment is to, we pulled item seven, which is memorandum 44. So it's moved in second to approve the Consent Agenda as amended. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. You're voting to approve, to approve, approve the Consent Agenda as amended. Did everybody vote? Who didn't vote? Just give her a, just, yea or nay. And thank you, that, that motion passes, the Consent Agenda is approved, 7-0. All right, that brings us to item F. One, ASD Memorandum Number 45, which is our six-year capital improvement plan. Let's see if we have anybody signed up. Nope. Okay. They probably will, but I'm not going to change it now. Okay, so we are on item F, what is the will of the body? Item F1.
Madam President?
Move to, mhm.
So by statute, by.
I need a motion to approve. Need a motion to approve memorandum 045, so we can talk about it.
Thank you for your patience, Madam President. I move to approve ASD Memorandum Number 045, Six-Year Capital Improvement Plan, Projects Tables 1 and 2, to approve the attached Anchorage School District Six-Year Capital Improvement Plan for July 2023 to June 30, 2029.
Second.
Second.
Okay, moved in second to approve memorandum number 045. And moved in second, any discussion? Yes, Member Lessons.
I would move to delay a vote on this until the December 5th board meeting.
Second.
Second. Okay. So we have before us a motion to delay memo 045 until time-sensitive or date-sensitive, December 5th. And that, who's second, I'm sorry. Member Donley's second. Any discussion?
Madam President?
Yes.
Yeah, question for Member Lessons. When, my understanding is there's a statutory obligation to file this with the state, when is that, and do you know how long after we approve, staff are going to need to complete it?
I don't have that exact information, I did read that the Capital Planning and Construction Department would present the CIP to the Municipal Planning and Zoning Commission in January. So clearly there would be time, it would need time to prepare that. So perhaps staff could reply to that. I simply think, even though we've said this is a very live document, there's a lot we don't know, and it seems short-sighted to pass something that might be amended based on any number of variables.
Dr. Bryant?
Sure, I would like to ask Chief Holland to advise on any impact of delaying this item.
Thank you, to the board, to the president. The date proposed, in the amendment proposed, would still work. The CIP by statute has to be submitted 90 days prior to the end of the fiscal year, but reverse engineering that, that means we have to get it to the Planning and Zoning Commission, as Member Lessons alluded to. So I would say that the date you have, you have chosen there would be the last possible date that this could be approved.
Thank you. Other, Member Higgins, your mic's on, did you have a, no?
That's fine.
So Member Lessons, okay, so I think I, I think I'm understanding why you want to pull it, you want to pull it to just give us time to get more information.
And we have another round, we have additional work sessions, we have a month of meetings with town halls to listen to the community. There is a prior motion that was tabled until December 5th regarding school bond debt reimbursement. We might have more information about Ursa Major at that point, that's conjecture, I'm just saying that there are an awful lot of variables here, and I'd rather pass a CIP that looks like an accurate CIP rather than one that we come back and need to edit.
Any other questions? So prepare to vote, and you're voting on delaying any action on memorandum 45 until December 5th. Everybody vote? And that passes, six yays, one nay. All right. So memorandum number 45 is delayed until December 5th. That brings us to item two, action item number two, memorandum 047.
Madam President, I move to approve ASD Memorandum Number 047, approval of April 2023 Bond Proposal, to approve the following bond proposal, Proposition 1, District-Wide Replacement and Improvement, Security Improvements, Deferred Requirements in Building Life Extensions, and Safety Improvements in the Amount of $37.787 million.
Thank you, is there a second? Second by Member Higgins, to approve memorandum number 047, that's approval of the April 2023 Bond Proposal. To approve memorandum number zero four seven, that's approved of the, approval of the, uh, April twenty twenty-three bond proposal. Any discussion? Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President, I just wanted to speak briefly, um, and first, um, express appreciation for, one last time, for staff and administration, um, being willing to pivot a fairly last second and facilitate the submission of a proposal which, um, I think gets us back on track, um, towards restoring voter trust. Um, I think pivoting to an annual, uh, smaller, uh, bond proposition strategy, uh, simply makes sense in this environment where we can't count on bond debt reimbursement to occur on an annual basis. I certainly hope that, uh, the bond debt moratorium is lifted, and we return to a sensible approach to capital investment in our schools, but, um, that is not assured at this point. So I think this, uh, proposal is the most appropriate, given facts on the ground, and I, uh, would urge everyone to vote yes.
Thank you. Yes, member lessons, thanks.
One, I appreciate member Jacob's comments, I appreciate the work of the staff. Um, I think it's a smart package, uh, from what I recall in our finance committee discussion, it would impact forty-five, forty-five hundred students, and that's every year moving forward at about ten different sites. You know, these are, these are ADA accessibility issues over at East High School, uh, these are seismic, these are roof, these are security, um, they just make sense, and our kids need them.
Any other, thank you, member lessons, any other discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Thank you, that passes, seven to zero. And we are now on item three, uh, and we have someone signed up to, to testify. On. Yes. Can we, uh, member Jacobs, are you gonna move to approve? Memorandum zero six two?
Thank you for your patience. I moved to, you can give me one meeting as chair, and I follow up a practice. All right, lesson learned, all right. Madam President, I move to approve ASD memorandum number zero six two Teamsters Union Contract. Um, it is the administration's recommendation that the school board approve, uh, and adopt the tentative agreement between the district and the general, uh, Teamsters Local nine five nine, covering bus drivers and bus attendants, which will establish terms and conditions of employment for individuals in this unit during the period between July one, twenty twenty-two, and June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Second?
Moved in second to approve memorandum number zero six two Teamsters Union Contract. We have, uh, Mr. Derek Musto. Signed up to testify. Uh, and crew. Welcome.
Okay, hello, good evening. Uh, good evening, President Bellamy, Dr. Bryant, uh, board members and those in attendance, both in public and online. My name is Derek Musto, Teamster Local nine five nine organizer and business agent. I'm the chief spokesperson for the Anchorage School District School Bus Driver and Attendant Bargaining Unit and Negotiation Team. With me tonight are some of our members, district employees, uh, that asked to be present when I speak to you tonight, you consider the contract in front of you. Uh, we're here to speak on action item F three, the, uh, number sixty-two Teamsters Union Contract, this is the tentative agreement between the district, uh, for the bus drivers and attendants. On behalf of our members, I respectfully ask that the board accepts and approves this agreement. School bus driver and attendant shortages have been an ongoing problem, and the lack of district bus drivers and tenants in Anchorage has been a regular topic in the news. This challenge to attract and retain qualified workers has significantly increased post-COVID, in part due to the challenges of the work schedules, hours available, and the number of competing full-time jobs that we can now find in the industry, or excuse me, in our local economy. District school bus workers work only nine months of the year, don't qualify for unemployment, invest up to twelve hours a day for an average of six hours of work. These professionals are the first and last non-household adult, uh, adults that our children see each day, and they play a vital, vital role in security for our school district and our community. Many of children going to the district and our parents, ourselves. This agreement before you tonight was negotiated in good faith by the union and the district and addresses a number of issues that we believe will help lowering school bus worker turnover at the district, help retain qualified school bus drivers and attendants, and assist us collectively in attracting qualified applicants to the district in the future. It was recently voted on and ratified by the union's membership. While this agreement doesn't address every issue that our members had, together, the district, the union, along with our respective bargaining teams, worked to find mutual agreement and resolution on as many items as we could. Uh, together, we stand before you tonight and respectfully ask that you support this agreement and vote to accept it. Thank you.
And thank you very much. Okay, next we have, uh, signed up to speak. Um, David Boyle. He's not there. David Boyle. Okay. All right, so the motion before us, uh, at this time is a motion to approve memorandum number zero six two, which is the tentative agreement with the Teamsters Union Contract. Yes, member Higgins?
I, I just want to express my appreciation to both parties at the table in this negotiation process, they're never easy. Both sides walk away a little bit unhappy, it must be successful, that's the way it always supposed to work. Uh, but the work that being performed by the members is so critical to the Anchorage School District, and I know it's pretty, it's accurate as to how many hours they put in in order to get so many work hours, it's, it's a tremendous sacrifice. Um, and, and the work is so critical to us, so I just, my appreciation to everyone within the group that participated in this and all the members they represent, thank you.
Thank you, member Higgins. My thoughts exactly, uh, and just an appreciation to all of our bus drivers, really, I mean, it's been, it's been a huge lift. And we're getting through it. Uh, member Jacobs, and then? Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President, um, just, uh, wanted to, um, I guess apologize to the Teamster members that this took this long, um, I think, um, this, a contract that had appropriate terms, um, given the level of service and, um, and sacrifice by these, uh, public service members, um, is long overdue. So we're, we're correcting something that should have been taken care of a long time ago. With that said, we're, we had detailed conversations, and we're continuing to have challenging conversations about, um, costs and our significant FY twenty-four fiscal gap. Uh, I think I would appreciate administration formally weighing in, you know, we're, uh, this will be an additional expenditure, additional cost in future budget years. What's administration's perspective as to how we go about meeting the obligation that we, we have to meet, um, for paying living wages to, to folks who take care of our kids? And contrast that with, uh, a, a landscape where we have declining funding due to inflation and a significant budget deficit.
Sure, I'm happy to address that now, I, at the end of the day, we're, we're very excited to move this agreement forward, and, uh, we can't afford not to get our children to school, and we can't afford not to pay our bus drivers what they need, uh, to thrive in these roles that we desperately need them in. Um, what we realized is, as a result of wages that are far below market rate, that bold action needed to be taken. Uh, as we all know, the landscape of the industry in Anchorage as it relates to transportation is different, especially with the booming transportation industry. So we realized that while this is an added cost to the district, uh, it's what we need to provide a baseline of service that any family member would expect, um, when they put their children in school. So we're really optimistic, this will put us on a path to be able to extend the promise of transportation for any family that needs it in the district. Uh, and we are also in the midst of, of a very severe budget deficit, so for that reason, we will need to determine other ways, uh, to, to eliminate costs. But this is also an opportunity to explore efficiencies, um, not just within operations but across the district, so we have a number of difficult decisions that we need to make, uh, and a number of different cuts that will impact, uh, administration, they will impact, uh, potentially various programs and potentially school closures. Um, but we need to do whatever it takes to ensure that we're offering a baseline of services that families deserve.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bryant. Was there a follow-up, member Jacobs?
Nope, I appreciate the answer, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, member Wilson?
Just want to reiterate what's already been said, but, um, also truly appreciate the efforts of our bus drivers and our, your commitment to our students, your continued commitment to our students and our families, so thank you.
Great. All righty, seeing no more hands, let's vote. And that passes, seven to zero. Um, thank you. And we're now on item F four, which is ASD memorandum number zero four four. Member Jacobs?
Madam President, I move to postpone ASD memorandum number forty-four, which is a word of negotiated contract maximum price for GMP, uh, for Aquarian Charter School renovations, uh, to approve and authorize the superintendent to award a guaranteed maximum price contract modification for the construction of the Aquarian Charter School renovations to Cornerstone General Contractors, Inc., in the amount of four million one hundred seventy-five thousand six hundred eighty-eight dollars, uh, to January ninth, that's our first meeting of the new year.
I think, member Jacobs, first we need to get the memo in action, so I need a second, and then you can make your.
I consulted with our, uh, local parliamentarian, I think we are able to.
Oh, we are able to just go to, to postpone, okay.
Second.
So who's second, Andy, okay, moved and, moved by member Jacobs, second by member Holloman, that we table any action on memorandum zero four four until December fifth, no, January.
January ninth, and the motion is to postpone, to be clear.
Oh, postpone. To January ninth, did you get that? Okay.
And then I could.
And you just, and you, uh, could you speak to your motion?
Madam President.
Followed by member Higgins?
So, um, earlier tonight at our work session, we heard from, of administration that, um, Aquarian is on a, it sounds like a list, um, of candidates that administration may propose at some point, um, for a, a building repurpose. Um, this board hasn't had a chance to weigh in on, um, if we're going to move forward, um, with administration recommendations for any closures at this point. We haven't heard from the community on that, we, um, there's, um, a number of unknowns, and so I think it's most appropriate to, um, have a common sense order of operations, and, um, those conversations will start, and, um, in December, and we should know by January ninth as to what the landscape looks like for how the board's decided to close the sixty-eight million dollar, um, deficit, and can make an informed decision on this item at that time. Thank you.
Member Higgins?
Yeah, I liked the start by saying, I appreciate Aquarium speaking up on this issue, uh, in the open session beforehand, that helps an awful lot to know where they're coming from. Um, this is an opportunity here to, when we know what schools may or may not be closed, uh, and how we may shuffle things around, that, uh, charter schools may benefit from it, and it means an awful lot, it means safety for the kids in schools that are, are built to a standard that is much greater than the eleven thirty earthquake. Uh, approving it at this time, if the two million dollar improvement is being considered as a factor in not moving them, then the four million will further kill it, and that's not really what we're trying to shoo. I think we're trying, and when I first got on the school board, um, when it came to, to charter schools, it was like, they want to be on their own, they go find their own space. Uh, I never liked that then, and I don't like it now. Uh, we have got to recognize these are not, uh, school kids outside the school district, they are ASD students, and our responsibility for them to provide the best opportunity within the school system, uh, we need to explore that. So I, the timing is great to postpone it, in my opinion, and I hope that we can somehow get all the kids in safe schools and get a benefit out of it that way, so, um, I gladly support this request, thank you.
Thank you, member Higgins. Other comments? I guess my question is to the administration, is there any, um, impact of not approving this tonight, delaying it? Thank you.
Chief Holland?
I think, I saw some heads shaking over there in the gallery.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President, um, to the question of delays, there is, uh, there is a downside risk to delaying, um, this, at this time, and that is that this is a construction project that would start, uh, this coming summer, and some of the, some of the technical elements of the, of the HVAC's plumbing system would even start over winter break. Um, delaying it does carry some risk of long lead time items that we're seeing in the construction industry that they may not be able to arrive in time, that would be the downside risk, is that that construction, uh, would be delayed or not start this coming summer.
Okay, and this was part of the twenty twenty bond, is that where these bonds are coming from?
Well, yeah, it was a previous bond, uh, forgive me, I, I don't remember if it was twenty nineteen or twenty twenty.
Okay.
But yes, it previously bonded, the money's there, it's shovel-ready, it's, it's already, uh, planned, designed, et cetera.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Wonderings? Let's vote. You're voting to, um, postpone memorandum forty-four until January ninth, and that passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we're on item G. Uh, non-action items, these items, items will come before you next, um, next week. Seeing no interest in pulling anything, thank you. We're now on item H, our, uh, which is our second opportunity for public comment, and we do not have anyone left to testify. So that brings us to our superintendent update, Dr. Bryant.
All right, good evening, uh, board and ASD community. Tonight, we discussed a number of important topics that will have a significant impact on our district's future. Um, while the path to passing a balanced budget will be difficult in our community, I do have a sense of optimism that in the long-term ASD will be in a much stronger position, both financially and academically. So I just wanted to briefly say that this will be difficult work, but it's an honor to serve the district during this time, and I'm thankful to be surrounded by a great team, both at the DIAS and over there in the audience that are supporting these efforts every step of the way and engaging with the community to make sure that we make the best decision moving forward. So this week, um, to put it succinctly, has been about the three Bs, it's been about busing, budget, and bonds, and I'm happy to say that tonight, we've made progress on all three fronts. So I want to spotlight a huge milestone, which is our negotiated agreement that will result in higher wages for our ASD bus drivers and bus attendants. This is in tandem with our new routing software and our long-term planning that will get us back to be in a much better position than we were when we started the year. We continue to chip away at our shortage by adding bus drivers and more routes, um, at full service, so we have thirty-two vacancies at the moment with seventeen drivers in training, so the end of this challenge is within sight, and I hope that this new agreement gives us the momentum we need to both hire our drivers and retain our drivers. So this week, we'll also be, um, shifting to our public town hall, so getting to that second B on, um, you know, our, our budget process, because at this point, it is critical that we gather community feedback for those who would be impacted by the proposed school closure recommendations. Public input is a major pillar that will guide our decision-making going into the next month. Schools are the heartbeat of, of our communities, and we need to hear directly from families and community members about these difficult circumstances. Declining enrollment and unstable and insufficient funding have led us down this path. For that reason, this is also an important time to advocate for sensible school funding legislation that will set us up for a long-term success, and that's not just for Anchorage students, that's for Alaskan students. Uh, lastly, in addition to town halls, I will be personally attending community events around the city to inform our community leaders about how we got here as a district and what needs to happen to improve school funding and academic outcomes for. school funding and academic outcomes for Anchorage children. Two last things, we also hit another important milestone tonight with the approval of the bond proposal for April. This is an opportunity to really look forward into investing in our current infrastructure to ensure that our buildings have the boilers, the healthy roofs, and the upgraded security features that our families expect from their neighborhood schools. And then, lastly, on a lighter note, I'll answer the question that the community has been wondering about me. Yes, I am enjoying the colder weather, and I can't wait to finally pick up my winter tires next week. And I've gotten some great new boots that'll make sure that I don't slip and fall, so I can continue to come to work every single day. So I look forward to ice skating season. So on that note, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any, any questions on the superintendent's report? Yes. Member Lessons?
This is not a question, it's more of a follow-up comment and note of gratitude. And I just wanted to share that I know that I had asked the administration to do some extra digging with, with respect to our reading data a couple of weeks ago and the skills. Now, how do we, we have sort of proficiency, but there are skills within those proficiency. And the administration kindly and thoroughly followed up with some of that additional information. But I think it's really worrisome that a significant percent of our kindergarteners entering this year are significantly, there are more of them at higher risk, meaning that they are, there are more of them at less than 15% proficiency when it comes to their letter sounds. Every, every one of those five skills is this year's kindergartners are at a higher risk than last year's kindergartners. And I just, looking at these different skill sets, helps me understand how much work is in the job of educating our students and how much we need to focus our resources on our young learners, or all of our learners. But I also think that we really need to consider the effect of all of these budget cuts on our youngest learners in particular, as they've been impacted by COVID.
Yes, thank you, member Lessons. Any other questions for superintendent relative to his or comments? So let's move on. All right, board member comments. Now, I would hate to have the time, y'all, tonight. So Pat's looking pretty suspicious over there, so I'm gonna let him go on. Go ahead on.
I don't know if we have time left for the other board members. I, I want to appreciate a lot of the stuff that, that took place tonight. There was a good discussion on the schools. I think that's critical that we do that. The nightmare for me is what do we need to do to balance the budget? And we're going to decide that in large part on next Tuesday. I, we have 10,000 employees, we have 45,000 kids, which we got all the parents and family members. And they are going to elect the representatives who will decide whether or not we have funding for our public schools. They will decide that. And so it's up to them to decide the outcome. And whatever the outcome is, we have to live with it. So I hate to pass it on to the elected officials if it starts with the voters. And this is a statewide issue, and I hope everyone is focused on what they consider to be most important. I don't know what will be the outcome. I think it was very interesting, the comment Mr. Anderson made about, we'll know in November when they come out with the governor's budget, whoever that is, on the proposal with the funding. That's probably going to be the first sign of how much we have to dramatically change and cut right away, or whether we got some sort of reprieve that might come down the road for some of it. But it's really that critical. So I just, the, the big thing is the funding issue and all the problems that we'll have with it. And I just, I just say vote, vote all the time. And I've got to make a comment to the superintendent. I hate to say it, it's not colder yet. So I'll just give you a hint that this is, this is not, this is called cooling off, but this is not colder yet. And I hope that we really get to introduce you what colder really means, okay? And good luck with that. But I appreciate everyone that came out and, and, and spoke tonight, too. I really caring about the kids and the outcomes. These neighborhood schools, to me, are very important. They, they're something that the local within that community, they get connected to that school, provides activities during the summer, it provides all kinds of things going on. And, and particularly when you got a title-one school and you got kids with lower income and then have to be further away, and their opportunity to participate in activities is impacted. I do believe in, in the neighborhood schools. But it really comes down to, we, we can't just cut everything out of the school just, we're gonna, we're gonna have to cut a little bit of everything, I guess. And, and unless we get the funding. And so Tuesday, we'll decide that, and I hope everyone votes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to echo appreciation for everyone who came out to testify tonight. Looking forward to future opportunities to engage the public as we navigate some of the really challenging calls we're going to be faced with here in the next few months. I think, you know, in reading through our emails and, and hearing testimony tonight, we're about to engage in a series of town hall meetings. My ask of administration is I think our challenge will be making sure that we do a better job of educating the public as to what's at stake. I think our general fund budget for this year is 86% staff and staff salaries and benefits. During our work session, we got a briefing that 60.3% of our budget falls under gen and special ed direct instruction. When we hear testimony pleading with us to keep a special or a particular program open or a particular building open, we need to make sure the public understands that that is not binary choice, that it's either open or closed, and that's the end of the conversation. At these town halls we're having, at community council meetings and individual interactions, we need to make sure that the public knows that there will be a equal reaction to our action as we approve a budget. Right now, I think some of that might be getting lost in translation. And so as we engage in these town halls, we, we must cross that bridge. We, you know, if we're consciously making that choice to, to keep a school open, to increase PTR, that's a conversation we can have as a community. I don't know that that's where I want to be, but we're gonna have a chance to discuss that. But right now, I think some of that's getting missed. Yeah, looking forward to the, the conversations this week and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to see how important I think it is when we begin these town halls that we limit the initial presentation to probably no more than fifteen minutes, because we really need the time to hear from the families that are impacted by these school closures. And it's real easy to over, over-present at some of these meetings that happened once within let view, where it was supposed to be the public talking, and it went on almost an hour, the representatives of the school district instead of listening to the public, they were talking to the public. And I really want to maximize the listening part of this as much as possible. At the same time, there seems to be just a tremendous amount of misinformation out there about school closures, and it's really unfortunate. So I would really encourage people to check out the district's website if you have questions and, and, and find out what the real facts are and not just assume that this is all been planned ahead of time, everything is, you know. I mean, people think this is already a done deal, and it's nowhere close to that. It's just the beginning of the public process. And member Lessons and I had the opportunity Sunday night to participate with the Alaska Black Caucus discussion of school closures, and I thought that was a very positive process. But it also emphasized that people have heard a lot of things that just aren't true. So, so I just really encourage people to check out the website first before jumping to conclusions about the process.
Thank you, member Donley. Member Wilson?
So I appreciate everyone that's taken their time to testify, to advocate for schools and advocate for programs. And all these budget cuts that, that are being proposed, for me, are really heartbreaking because our kids deserve more, not less. Our staff deserves more, not less. And, and I really hope that, and I know others have said it tonight, I, I really hope that voters select legislators that support education. And once legislators are elected, reach out to them, encourage them to support education. They, they really need to hear from their constituents. When I, when I went to Juneau last year, that's, that's what I heard from many of the legislators that I spoke with is, is they, what they hear from their constituents really makes a difference to them in, in how they vote, in, in what they focus on. So I, I just want folks to know that the, the conversations alone are, are really difficult for, for me and for, I believe for most of us, for those reasons and, and many other reasons. On a more positive note, our next communications meeting, committee meeting is on Thursday, November seventeenth at noon. And ASD Connect publishes on Thursday. If you have not signed up on our website, please do so. New information and updates about our budget solutions, plan, and bus transportation will be on there, along with updates about Be Smart and Stop It. Also, check out our Facebook page and website for a new series called Teaching Today. It's a look into the successes happening in the classroom through the lens, lenses of our teachers. And it, it's really good stuff. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Member Lessons?
I'll be brief because my throat hurts too much to talk. We have a finance meeting tomorrow at noon, so if you didn't get enough budget, we can do it all over again tomorrow and even more. I wanted to update other board members that we've had a really robust response rate so far to, on the wellness committee, Dad Hawk. So many thanks to, to, to a lot of folks, including Ms. Sutton, who I see at the back there, team, folks from communications to help put this survey out. We've had more than 1,700 responses so far. It will also be available for one more week. And then the committee will take that input on proposed changes back into the committee before sending something off through the board's governance process. So we're, we're at the, we're not at the vision and finish line yet, but we're, we're somewhere there. And then finally, I just wanted to share that I continue to have great visits to schools. And I'm going to pass around a flyer from Mountain View. They have, they just received a grant from Siri, and they have a whole month of Alaska Native programming enrichment opportunities. So maybe, Amanda, we can ask you to just put them on the board's calendar. Really excited to see all of these wonderful things happening, not at just this school, but at lots of our schools. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Member Holloman?
Thank you. Yeah, it's been on my mind for, for some time since we started this, that I'll be on a board that gets to vote about closing a school. And as someone that, that worked in a school where I felt like we had a strong team and a strong school, that's really depressing in, in a remarkable way. I, I think a lot of times, we tend to think about our schools as a collection of classes and people kind of doing the same thing in close proximity. But actually, good schools are much more dynamic than that. It is, a, a good school that's really succeeding is a unique collection of people working together in a way that covers all the bases and, and takes care of as many kids as, as they can successfully. And it doesn't just happen. It, it doesn't just come together because people are going to work in the same location every day. It takes the right leadership, and it takes the right staff, and it takes the right support people. And, and if we, I, I think that's part of why we recognize that we shouldn't disperse in what view. Because we love the results out of that school to the point that dispersing it is not going to deliver those, the same dynamic to two or three other schools that those students might be dispersed into. It's why the clap folks came as a group, not just one or two or three people to speak, but they came as a team. The other part that distresses me greatly, it, it's almost a given when we're talking in public about how bad schools are. People echo it. There's no pushback. Moments like this, we have people come to us and talk about how much this program matters, how much this school matters, have the special things that these people do that make things work for their kids. And also kind of hate that we do this at the very end of the night, because I'm not sure anybody listens this long. I, I know if I was watching from home, I wouldn't be. But it's increasingly urgent that parents speak up when they hear people saying those things. Well, no, wait a minute. That's not the experience I'm having. It's an interesting phenomenon, but people will let it pass. And if you talk to them one-on-one, a lot of times they'll go, you know, my kid got a great education. And probably not perfect. We're not a perfect district, and we, we have our weak spots. But a lot of people in this town really love the education they got here. And they like their schools, and they like what's happening. And we want our schools to be a center of the community. We backed away from it somewhat. We used to have community schools that brought a lot of people into our buildings at night. It's too expensive, wasn't directly on our mission, and we dropped that. Our schools are a little more difficult to rent, which is kind of sad, because we want people in, no reason these buildings shouldn't be used as much as possible. They are strong buildings. They do have great resources in them. We should be trying to get them out there. But we have, for twenty years, basically dealt with trying to shave a little bit here and there and save a little bit money here and there, because that's how long this has been going on. We're possibly going to eliminate middle school. And, and middle school is a model, and, and it really is just people. We've got buildings that are designed to be middle schools, and that kind of facilitates it. But it does two remarkable things. One is from a labor standpoint, it actually pays teachers to do things we expect them to do, as opposed to just donating that time, hoping they do it, and maybe some of them do it, and maybe some of them don't. We actually take another forty-five minutes and say, this is when you're going to talk to parents. This is when you're going to be in IP meetings. This is when you're going to do some of this work interactively with each other. I'm, I'm someone who's worked in the private sector a lot, too. No one has to argue for that, because the private sector doesn't expect you to behave that way to begin with. You just volunteer all your time. But for education, it was a great step forward to say, this is what we think you should be doing, and we're going to give you a time while you're on the clock to do it. But the other part is that it moved into really looking at the safety and security and the, the emotional needs of students at a critical time as they are maturing and, and making that transition from being an elementary student to a high school student. It just meant that people had a little more time to watch them, that we kept them in a smaller group, that we kept them in a place where they could be safe, or they could experience the larger school. They could be part of a group of 120, or they could be part of a group of five or six or 700 students. And that versatility, I think, contributed a lot. When we've talked to parents about it, a lot of them have talked about how awful junior high was and, and how marvelous middle school is. I'm not sure it shows up in test scores, but that's not really what it was ever supposed to affect to begin with. We, we'll be going backwards, and we will be counting on kids to be more resilient themselves and more self-sufficient themselves. And a lot of our kids don't have the resources to have that strength. So I, I hope a lot of us on this board will do what we've been doing for years, and that's advocating for more resources for schools. I hope parents will, too. I'm not, I'm not asking them to, to say anything they don't feel. We've got parents that are unhappy with things that have happened, and we need to work on that. But I do hope the parents that have had a strong experience, the parents that their community school matters to them, and the parents that feel like their kids are getting a good education, will say so strongly. We, we really need for those voices to speak up. I, I think there are thousands of people that don't think to, to push back on it. We really need for them to push back on it, because the public narrative is that we're not getting anything done. And I, I know that's not true. But it doesn't matter too much. I mean, yeah, we, we know- But it doesn't matter too much. I mean, yeah, we, we know what we know, but parents know because they have a kid in the system that is getting something they need every day. So that's my hope, and that, that somehow it allows us to escape this December without some of the, the awful things that, that we're faced with doing. Having become familiar with the immersion programs as a board member, the parent engagement with those programs, the parent engagement with the schools, and with each other, is, is an incredible thing, and the students that come out of it at 12th grade have skills that are remarkable, that, and when you step back and look at it and go, wow, this district has a stronger immersion program than just about anywhere else in the country. That's kind of amazing to me, and the fact that we may be looking at shaving it down a little bit, which I, I think will have a disproportionate impact on it, is just incredibly sad. But I'll also say, I do understand that most people in Anchorage probably don't know much about it. They, they don't realize the impact it has and the way it engages students and parents and everything. Somehow, we need to get all those stories out there so that people really do understand it. So I have to admit, this, I think, is going to be a remarkably depressing winter. Sorry about that. It actually is better when it gets colder, and there's a couple of feet of snow on the ground. You won't need the studs on your boots, because once it's dry and frozen, but that first time when it's, the ground is 20 degrees and the wind is 55 degrees, and everything's wet on the top and frozen on the bottom, that's when you need your studs on. But I, I think it is going to be a tough winter. I do hope people speak up. I think it's an incredibly valuable thing to the community, and it's a moment where we need the community to express that to the folks in our legislature. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Holloman. So my only, I get out everything that everybody said, really. I'm looking forward to the town halls. We also have our annual school board conference at the Cook this week, and I'm glad to see that some of us are going to be there. We have at least one student representative that'll be joining us. So the dates of the town halls are November 3rd, 4th, 14, 16, 21st, and 22nd. It will be in the board connect that's coming out, the locations, the exact locations. They are site-specific, which is why they're being held at each of the, of the recommended schools. I do like the, I want to thank the staff for the, 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 the new drawings, the new look at how we look at our, how we spend our money, what we spend and what our costs are, our personnel costs are. I like the circle gram, and what education costs, really. I mean, it's, it's depressing, but I do see a light at the end of the tunnel, and I'm going to hold on to the light. So, Dr. Bryan, do you have any final thoughts?
No final thoughts for me. Thank you, Madam President.
All right. With that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Moving second to adjourn. No opposition. Hearing and saying no opposition, we are adjourned.